And it is time for the enrichment and challenge support program presentation. We are so excited to hear this. After we've just voted this depressing budget, it is so exciting to hear what might happen after all of the hard work that's gone into this. Parents, community members, professionals, outside researchers, third-party best practices, led by Dr. Fisher Mueller and the superintendent. I mean, it's just, Amy, of course, it's just exciting to see the culmination of all this.
I've actually said, as Dr. Fisher Mueller prepares here, that I actually believe this is one of the more -- you just did a comparison of some of the differences. I think this is one of the more stark differences that really talks about where the priorities of this school system, where this administration, where this school committee are between, when you look at these two budgets, that what you're about to hear is really a vision for enrichment and challenge support and a vision for what this kind of program can do to support us in driving this kind of change for all students in all classrooms. And it really speaks, I think, to our values, that it is part of that overall spending plan and to your values in that you gave us this charge when we were back here having a very different conversation two years ago. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Fisher Mueller to walk you through this very exciting presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. What I would like to do for you tonight is to summarize the committee's recommendations and then share with you how our initial work of moving on these recommendations and what our next steps are. Very quickly, some quick background. So some form of ECS enrichment and challenge support has been in Brookline for over 35 years, and it went through the very first phase of a new program review process back in 2004. And the review of the current research at that time and the program's design and the feedback from stakeholders had the recommendations for that review come out around consultation, differentiated instruction, critical and creative thinking, and to bring some more standardization and consistency to the program. Then, as Dr. Lupini has described, the program went through a difficult time of being put up for a cut and then reinstated with a charge to the program review committee. So this committee here, what you see is representation across all of our stakeholder groups, which is really important to us in every program review committee and especially important in this case for this work. So that committee reconvened after the reinstatement of this program and the budget, and they were given a new charge. They were charged to rethink this program. And we talked to the committee about looking at this program as opportunities to personalize learning for students and to provide opportunities for meaningful, meaningful learning and challenge and broaden the scope of the program. We presented to them the goals of strategic plan 2.0 and asked them to think about those goals and how this program could actually drive our strategic plan goals in terms of students becoming invested in their learning and pursuing their passions, along with acquiring skills of effective learners and technology and those areas. So you are familiar with these four goals, and it was very important to us that we saw the relationship between this committee's work and these goals and how to really make this work happen for all students. With the charge, with the strategic plan goals and the knowledge of the current literature in this program, in this area, the committee focused on these different areas of investigation. For sure, they looked at the stakeholder data that we had, and a review of the current program is provided by the coordinator, Mies Boot. They also investigated what was available for other programs within the state of which there are very few. And attention to the current literature, they looked deeply at the potential of project-based learning as a strategy for challenging and offering meaningful learning for students at higher levels, as well as what you see here in terms of the 21st century skills and beyond differentiation, looking at personalization and individualization, which are quite different. They were given the charge to look at technology as a learning tool and what those opportunities might be, as well as out-of-school options and then the idea of broadening our resources and really accessing the community. And I skipped this one here because this is a real important area, the idea of the tiered models for the program, which has become a foundation of the recommendations. I'm hesitating because that's not showing up on that. Neither is that. So with their research and their investigation, the committee landed on these four fundamentals that whatever they were to create, they needed this program to be classroom-centered, curriculum-based, collaborative, and to create partnerships. So what's meant by classroom-centered is that the challenge that needs to be embedded for students needs to be sort of the business of the classroom and the way of the learning, not considered a special activity. Curriculum-based relating to that has to be that the curriculum has to be designed with students, these students in mind in how to design and offer challenge as it's shared with teachers. It must be collaborative. It must take advantage of the resources that we have within the system in all of these different areas that can then be brought to bear to support students who have mastered the grade-level learning objectives. And then the idea of building these partnerships, again, of really maximizing the opportunities that we have. And so their recommendations are built upon this foundation, and the tiered model of instruction is the defined structure that I will share with you. So this triangle may be familiar to many of you. It's response to intervention, RTI. It's most commonly spoken of in terms of struggling students and what are the strategies that we need to take to support their learning. What the committee did is looked at this tiered instructional model and thinking about the students who needed to be challenged and who needed, who weren't showing the evidence of meaningful learning. So Tier One is about what happens in the classroom. It's about those best practices being applied on a regular basis. And as you see here, Tier Two is specialized. It's moving outside of the classroom. And then Tier Three is individualized. It's much more intensive, and in this case, it means acceleration. What this model has then provided us in the system is a full continuum of instruction for all learners. So as I mentioned earlier, the triangle that you're used to seeing is for struggling students, and that is when you move from Tier One here, the classroom, Tier Two for specialized interventions, Tier Three for individualized interventions. That is the area that's more familiar with you. So now that we have, as a result of this committee's work, excuse me, is what is the instruction that we need to support students who are in need of challenge and acceleration? And this model here, this continuum, is based on this bottom here, the foundation. It is about student learning data, and it's about how do you design this meaningful learning? You need to know your students well. The curriculum, that goes back to those areas, the foundational areas, the curriculum has to be designed with challenge in mind and an understanding of what are these habits and skills that we want students to learn. You have to design the assessments so you can see evidence of that learning and then develop the instruction with the resources that are necessary. So in Tier One, again, think about the regular classroom practices. What we have to do is we have to more intentionally embed challenge into the curriculum as we hand that curriculum over and we work with teachers. We have a number of extensions and resources, but what we have learned is that those extensions are not always seen as easily accessible to teachers. And so we have to make them more accessible, make them more user-friendly. In the classroom, we have to do a better job of collaborating with the specialists that we have, technology specialists, math, and literacy. And what we have to do is to identify the assessments that are necessary to show evidence of student learning and then monitor that learning over time. What's real important in Tier One is the role of the ECS resource teacher. The idea here is that these folks know students well as they have moved through our K8 system. These folks help our teachers act proactively to plan ahead, how to embed challenge in the classroom, in the curriculum. They help to identify these resources and strategies, and they coach on the design of learning and the co-planning. I mentioned quickly there earlier, problem and project-based learning. So it's not that this particular type of instruction is to be a model across all of our classrooms all of the time. What project-based learning is about is how do you actually bring that relevance, bring that rigor, bring that real-life experience to the classroom and into the curriculum in a way that you identify these strong elements of instruction, like student choice, like how do you embed that rigor and relevance, like authentic audiences? Who are the students showing the evidence of their learning? Who are they showing that to? And is that work meaningful? And so what's different here is this idea of coaching on that design versus the earlier model of just consultation. And then the ECS resource teachers support the implementation and then again, the idea of monitoring student learning over time. Tier Two is more specialized. The idea here is that when a teacher does not see evidence of meaningful learning, then it means that the student needs something different, needs something more. And that's about identifying what are these specialized interventions. And what you see here is the use of child study team. So that's a structure that we have in place, again, utilized most often with our struggling learners. But with these recommendations, what we are saying is that continuum of instruction for all learners now means that our child study teams are a resource to support teachers as they wrestle with thoughts, you know, different ideas about instruction for all learners. So Tier Two then is when the teacher is not seeing that meaningful learning, the teacher then brings that child's profile to the child study team, a group of colleagues, a group of educators, and they talk about what are some possible strategies based on that student's profile that they believe then can actually create the kind of learning that we are hoping to see. Ideas are more personalized project-based learning. The idea of helping students to identify their areas of interest, their areas of passion, and how they may be able to go deeper. Independent studies and resources, research, and then also extending beyond the classroom. And here again, the idea of accessing technology. You'll see this repeated over and over, the idea of monitoring that progress and documenting meaningful learning. The ECS teacher works closely with the classroom teacher within Tier Two. As the student may actually be doing some learning outside of the classroom, what's important is the classroom teacher is still, if you will, owning the learning of that child. It's not that that student's learning then is transferred over to the ECS teacher. When we don't see the meaningful learning that we would expect from a student, even with the specialized interventions of Tier Two, then the teacher may go back to the child study team and outline those areas in need of further challenge. It may be that the child study team with the teacher recommends more individualized intervention. And currently, within our program, that's about acceleration. Now, a major difference here, which is a real strength of their recommendations, is the idea that content challenge is owned by the content area. Math challenge, which is our greatest area in ECS, is owned by math. So when we're talking about a student who is in need of this level of individualized intervention, the math coordinator would be the one who would be working with the math specialist, be working with the ECS resource teacher to identify what's best for that child. And then when we're talking about the great acceleration, that is a responsibility and a process that would remain with the ECS coordinator. Touch more on child study teams. The idea here is that child study teams are collaborative problem-solving models. Child study teams are these group of educators that are a resource to teachers when they are not seeing the learning that they would expect. And so a teacher comes to this group, and they outline all of the interventions that they have tried, interventions, challenges, whatever that may be, and what the student's response was to each of those different options. Again, very data-driven. And then what this child study team does with the teacher, with the ECS resource specialist, with the, it may be the math specialist, the literacy specialist, they review that data, and they propose an action plan. That action plan goes back to the teacher, back to the classroom in some cases, or it's in that Tier Two, which is just outside of the classroom. The idea being that the action plan is followed, data is gathered, people continue to ask the question of, is the child showing evidence of meaningful learning with this intervention, with this added challenge? So with these recommendations, what we are doing is proposing the expansion of our child study teams. So that's just an overview of the tiered model, the tiered instruction, which is really, I believe, the cornerstone of this set of recommendations. But beyond that tiered instruction, the committee is saying that we need to build stronger partnerships, both partnerships within the school, meaning families and parents, but also outside of the school. How are we, again, accessing those opportunities? And looking beyond just Brookline, just Boston, all right? What is it, how is it that technology can help us? So in summary, what we're talking about are recommendations that are about being curriculum-based, challenge being built into the curriculum, being proactive, using project-based learning and the elements of project-based learning in the planning of that instruction. Their recommendations are very strong around professional development, ongoing learning. So the professional development that's necessary is professional development for our child study team members in terms of what is the profile, what are the characteristics of high-level learners, what are those needs, and what are the common strategies for supporting their needs. Professional development is also with the ECS research teachers around project-based learning. The professional development is with our math specialist in terms of, and I say math specialist, it would be any specialist, but it's primarily math, in terms of how, what their role is and how they can support higher-level learners. And then the tiered instruction that I talked about. What's important about this tiered instructional model that is different for our ECS program is that it brings a very clear process that's articulated and that's understood and has a structure to support it. So it's something that we can both, we can plan for, we can see, we can watch, we can measure, we can question and change, and it would bring greater consistency across the system. As well with this tiered instructional model, what we do is we are very deliberate around the collaboration and accessing the expertise of the different educators that we have in the system. And once again, I know I'm repeating myself, but it's that important. What we are doing with these recommendations are we are seeking to identify the assessments that are necessary so that we can actually use data of student learning on a regular basis, because you can't know what to do next unless you know exactly where the child is in that learning. So it's very student-learning, data-driven, all of this being coordinated and managed by our ECS staff. So like other program review processes, we don't wait for the formal, okay, now we are in Phase Two or Phase Three. When we see that there's work that needs to happen and we have resources available, we go ahead and get started, and so we have. The obvious one is the budget preparation that you just approved. Thank you very much. What's embedded within there is to increase the capacity of our ECS resource teachers across our schools. Also, it's to add math specialists. And it's not special math specialists that are now for ECS, you know, students who need that support. It's that math specialists, as well with our literacy specialists, we are all about all kids, okay? And so what we have to do is we have to increase their capacity by building those FTEs. And also, you see there parenthetically, we need to also support our middle school grades, six, seven, and eight. That's been true both with intervention, and it is also true with challenge. The budget puts forth a 1.0 coordinator, currently .6, so it's an additional .4, as well as the CSTs that I mentioned, and the very, very valuable professional development. So to pull that professional development out a little bit and let you know what's happening right now that's so critical is that Alan November's name has been used a number of times tonight. The work that Alan is doing with us is directly related to this model and these recommendations. What Alan November's work is around is how do you redesign the curriculum, redesign the lesson plan such that you actually maximize the potential of the technology, and he uses this language, in order to transform the learning? So he has these six questions that he uses. People bring, they bring their units and their lessons, and then it's a bit of a protocol, if you will, that you actually work through each of Alan's questions, and those questions are things like, they question the depth of inquiry, the depth of critical thinking, they question the relevancy, does this work matter? Does it matter to the student? It questions, is this best-in-the-world work? And what he means by that is with the Internet, you can actually access examples of great work, right? And so when you give kids the opportunity to see what the answer, like a project, what that could look like, they get that in their mind, and then they can go even further. They can go even further. Sometimes people talk about when you show kids examples, it stops them, it lowers the bar. No. With kids who are looking for challenge, with kids who are looking, you know, above and beyond, what it does is they say, oh, yeah, you can do it that way? Well, you can do it that way, too. And so Alan's work, again, is having direct impact immediately. The Buck Institute, one of the organizations that is very well-known for their high-quality work on project-based learning, has come to Brookline. And instructional coaching is very important for our ECS resource teachers. Again, it's not consultation, it's coaching. It's about how do we help teachers to design learning? You see there, BEF, BEF, BEF. The Brookline Education Foundation has been a major partner in this professional development, and I want to be sure to acknowledge their work. There is professional development around technology. This is the element of how does the technology actually serve, again, the lesson design? What are some of the apps that might be able to be accessed to offer different challenge to students? And then the professional development around the characteristics and needs of advanced learners. Again, primarily there, we're talking about CST members, but also certainly classroom teachers. So this is all work that came out of this committee's set of recommendations that we were able to move on this year. So when we do all this, when we apply these recommendations, when we get the funding that we've asked for, what are you going to see? So what you're going to see is you will see evidence, well, we will see, evidence in the curriculum of these areas for greater depth, more rigor, more relevance to students. Project-based learning, the idea of how are we actually giving students choice? What are the driving questions that we are using? And these driving questions can then provide access to that curriculum for students at all different levels. When we do this right, you will see evidence of the partnerships that we have built, and these partnerships with colleges, universities, organizations, locally, globally. We will have the opportunity, actually, to get our kids connected to great work that's going on beyond our schools. You're going to see out-of-school time and extensions and enrichment offerings. Currently, we do not have organized work and organized activities around, and the name's escaping me right now, Odyssey of the Mind, yes. As well, right now, we are not accessing the support that parents are offering, right? We are not welcoming the parent involvement in terms of extensions and out-of-school time. And with an additional .4, that's something that the coordination, the ECS coordinator can actually manage now. And we will see evidence of those assessments that I spoke of, that we're going to be able to actually see the idea of meaningful learning, of students actually showing growth. The reason I keep emphasizing that is we talk about challenge, and challenge is important, but it has to be challenged for a purpose, all right? It's a purpose for learning. It's not just a challenge in terms of an activity, and, you know, it could be enjoyable, it could be fun, but how does that actually move that child and the learning? I'll show you an example in a minute, I believe, of surveys where we will see evidence if we do this right in our surveys and the questions that we are asking. And we're going to be able to actually point to different projects that have been designed. And it's not that we're going to have these individual projects across these multiple grade levels at each and every school. What it's about is as we build these projects, what we can do is come together and share those, and it can then develop as a system-wide third-grade project, for example. So we will be able to point to a number of these. Supervision evaluation will play an important role in how we advance this model, and later as a next step, you'll hear a little bit more about that. So what does success look like? I point to this over and over again because we are driven by our strategic plan. And our strategic plan is in development in terms of the identification of specific goals that attach to these visionary goals here, and those goals will have metrics with action plans. And those metrics will be what we'll be able to point to when we say that these are the outcomes that we are seeking. So for example, we did a survey, and there is a question here that asks about a student's level of interest in school at 81%. If we do this right, we would like to see that percentage going up. My child likes going to school, 88%, all right? That's a strong percentage, but we want to see that go up. When one member of the parent group presented these initial recommendations, the parent talked about wanting to see her child come home with that glow, that excitement about what they did in school, in talking about that particular, that project, that activity. And when students come home and tell stories like that, then parents will be responding at higher rates on questions like this student engagement. So we are asked often about how will we measure this, what will it look like? So we're not making this stuff up, okay? This is highly researched work in terms of the idea of matching challenge with ability. So Mihaly Csikszentmihalyi, he is the individual who defined flow, which is that sweet spot, if you will, that matches a high level of challenge with a high level of ability. So while happy and confident, right, you see that in the control area, well, that's nice, and we want that, okay? What we know is that if we actually are able to build the challenge even more, that it can actually provide kids an opportunity to really get into a space where their learning can go to a depth and a degree that is beyond what they may be experiencing right now. And I actually did have a parent who spoke of the challenge as offered in the classroom as relaxed math, right? Now, it was an interesting use of the word, and here you see in Csikszentmihalyi's work, relaxation, that lower right-hand grid there. So it's a high ability with low challenge. So we want to be up in that upper right-hand quadrant. As well, the work of Ken Robinson talks about students, not students specifically, but people in their element. And the element is, again, that upper right-hand quadrant, when you're able to match a person's passion, what they love doing, with something that they're really good at. And what we believe is that as we grow this model, as we build in these different structures, processes, resources, we will have the opportunity to work with students in a way that we can help to identify what's being defined here as the element. And we would hope then to be And we would hope then to be able to see evidence of this in the surveys and the questions that we ask parents and staff. One of these questions here, it says, "My child is challenged to meet high expectations at this school." That's 69%, all right? We would certainly want to see that percentage go up. Another thing that we'll see if we do this right is we will take care of another gap that we have, all right? We talk often about the achievement gap in terms of getting students too proficient. The other gap that we have is around students who are proficient and students who are advanced. And that, if you look at it demographically, defines some consistent patterns, some persistent patterns that we want to break. So as you have seen, we have advanced in our percentage of students scoring advanced, but we want that to go even higher. I'm going to go ahead and move through those. So with all of these recommendations, with the budget that we've put forward to you, with the work that we have done so far, where are we and where are our next steps? What we're doing right now is we are actually really unpacking these recommendations to ask ourselves, what does this really look like? What will these expectations be across these different roles? We need to share that work and develop that work with principals and with staff. We need to meet with the CST leaders across the schools and help them to understand this work. We need to look at this model, look at the work we are doing, ask ourselves, where are we unintentionally actually putting up maybe barriers, or we are blind to areas where we are not including students who otherwise ought to be included, all right? This is, Dr. Jackson, I really appreciated your definition of equity, all right? We need to make opportunities available. We need to actually take steps to identify what might be invisible to us right now on where students actually need to be challenged further. And I have to say just very quickly, oftentimes, students who are not challenged, one of their expressions of that is through behavior and misbehavior, all right? So through this professional development, as we get educators well aware of what some of these signals might be, might we be able to identify students who aren't misbehaving because they're not challenged, or they don't understand, or around other difficulties that may be present? But is it because they're not fully engaged, they're not challenged, they're bored, they are acting out because of that? That's just an example of places where we have to identify strategies, actions we can take to address this issue of equity and bring this opportunity to all students. We have professional development plans that we need to just finalize and be sure that we get those out and get educators involved. And acceleration, that third tier, we believe strongly that we can be more creative about that, that right now, the idea of grade acceleration and subject acceleration comes with its challenges. So there's a question of cost-benefit. So my child will move ahead two grades to take math as a fourth grader in sixth grade. However, to do that on a regular basis, that class meets, and then my student misses fourth grade science, for example, all right? We don't have to put, we don't want to put students in that situation, that they're giving something up in order to gain the challenge that they need. And so we believe we can be more creative about that. As well, we have to talk about increasing CST capacity. It may not be that we just make an additional team in every school. There's a lot of work to do this summer and a lot of work for the next school year. Of course, assessment and data, what does that look like? How are we going to actually move that work forward? And we're working with the curriculum coordinators as they work with teachers in the development of curriculum, not only in the redesign, as we talked earlier about with the work with Alan November, but also the idea that we want to embed in our curriculum, in a proactive way, challenges and extensions that are available and easily accessible to teachers. And we want to spend time real quickly in initiating partnerships that are right there that we're aware of, and you'll hear later about some opportunities with technology. As well, when we talk about rigor and relevance, they're actually standards and very, very clear descriptions of what rigor, intellectual rigor, looks like and what relevance looks like. And so what we need to do is to take those documents, and if you will, unpack them and create the ability to look at those and our units and our curriculum and say, to what degree is this particular lesson rigorous as defined by, if you will, William Daggett and his work? So we have a model. We have a set of recommendations that give us a structure, a set of processes. We have people in roles that we can define and be clear. We have an awful lot of excitement about this, a lot of energy. We have the resources to move this work forward. And so I just want to be sure to thank and express my gratitude to all the members of the committee. We have staff here right now, if I may, Tanya Gregoire, Carolyn Miller, Miss Boot, Sue Poligian, Scott Moore, Amy Martin, yes? And parents on the parent advisory committee as well, Mark Jones and Lydia, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name.
Shire.
Shire, thank you. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you so much. Are there questions or comments from the committee? We've talked about this a couple times in subcommittees, so I don't know if there are any particular observations that people want to alleviate for this conversation. Barbara, Ms. Scotto?
What I would like to thank the committee for doing is really making very clear that this is a way of looking at all students. This is not a program for those separate few who stand out in certain ways, but a program where you look at each child to see where that child needs, or if that child needs enrichment. I think that that's part of the challenge of getting this program accepted because so many people think, the minute you say gifted and talented or enrichment and challenge, they think, oh, yeah, they're those smart kids. They're that little group of smart kids. And we don't have the money for just a little group of smart kids. We know that even if we did have the money, that's not the way to look at this program. We need to look at this program much more broadly. We need to look at this program as a way of reaching maybe the sort of disaffected child who isn't excited about school but is very interested in some sort of thing that we, as teachers, can latch on to and really help that child. That's been what teachers have been trying to do over time, but it's hard, given our challenges today. It's certainly hard because we have so many children in the schools, the schedules are very packed. And it has been the ECS resource teachers who have, I think, and the parents, who have kept the light of this program alive. So I have to thank the committee for doing this and really praise the work of Dr. Fisher Mueller and me, in keeping this before us because it is a program that we have been in danger of losing. And that would not be in the best interests of our students, I think.
Thank you. Ms. Cox?
I will just add my name to all of Ms. Scotto's comments, but also, you talked about how the extension resources haven't been accessible to the classroom teacher, and is that an issue of the topic or the access to materials, the access to technology? Can you just help us understand that a little better?
Yes. So we have a portal, and teachers go to the portal to access all sorts of resources that are available. What teachers are telling us is they click and the resources pop up, and it's just overwhelming, overwhelming. So it needs to be a little bit easier, a little bit clearer about where to go for exactly what, instead of just entering this large mass of resources. And that is a place where the ECS resource teachers can be very, very helpful, that inasmuch as I say math belongs to math, the ECS resource teachers become very facile in working through those resources there within the portal. So as they work with a teacher and the teacher describes a particular, what's needed, they know right where it is, right where to go, they can then guide the teacher as the teacher learns to use those resources.
Which just sort of underscores the importance that we want differentiation in the classroom, but it's going to be very hard for a classroom teacher to manage that without the help of specialists like the ECS staff, right?
That's right. That's right.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jennifer. As always, I was at one of the, I think, one of the conversations about this, but I didn't at the time pick up on a couple of things. So although Ms. Cox just asked one question that I had, so we can sort of check that off the list. The idea of meaningful learning strikes me as extraordinarily subjective, and I wonder how we're going to know when we see it.
So we actually are defining it, meaningful learning means. And it's about a series of bullets that have us understanding that we want students involved in them knowing about themselves as learners, about where they are in need of challenge, where they are in the curriculum, so that there is an understanding of content and skills. That's the basic part. But then the idea of meaningful comes in, does this work have purpose for the student? Is this learning advancing the student? Which is that what we're looking for is, we're looking to describe the difference between enjoyment of a challenging activity, engaging, right, versus something that actually advances that child's understanding of the content and of the skills. And we're using the word meaningful to help define that. So it's about identification of what are the goals, what are the learning goals for this student? And then with those goals, is this actually the learning that that child needs to be doing? Is this learning that is meaningful and purposeful for this child?
Does that mean that we are moving towards having specific goals for every child in every class?
Not to that degree. Teachers have goals for every single student as they walk around the room and engage with that child. They know that when they approach the student to conference on a particular piece of writing, they know where that student is in their skill level of that writing. They know what that child needs to do next. What we don't always do very well is to actually get clear and articulate that and document it as well, so that it can be shared with specialists and other educators. But I wouldn't go as far to say that it's about having an individual education plan, a series of goals with objectives to this degree. That's not, that's not what we're describing to that extent.
And if I could just push this a little further. So as you were describing, I think you were describing the parents who talked about, you know, wanting their child to come home, it's a dream of every parent, I think, that their child has come home from school, and when you ask that question, "How was school today?" Their answer is not going to be, "Fine."
They'll learn nothing.
Fine, where are the chips? But so I love that image, but it made me start thinking about, this description is beautiful and it's very classroom-centered and it's very teacher-centered, which I think is completely appropriate because that's what we're talking about. But my question is that as we're, as we are also talking about, how do we recognize the child that needs more of something? That a lot of the time, you may have a child who's really bored and not acting out, who's doing just fine, and yet not particularly engaged, coming home and saying, "School was fine." And so my question is, where is the, where is the interaction with the parent's experience of that child in this whole conception of how do we identify the children who need it? How do we identify what they need? So that, where is the parent's role? What happens to the parent who has a child coming home and that child is just fine, but that child is not particularly engaged? And the parent knows the child and knows that there's something that could be happening but doesn't quite know what it is. What does that parent do and where in this does that conversation happen?
I believe that your comments and question relate to part of this foundation that you see under this part here, knowing students well. And I think also you're speaking to the role of the ECS resource teacher who, if you will, follows the student year to year, teacher to teacher, follows the student and the parents through. So I believe, and I, okay, I'm here seeing some head nods. What I feel very strongly about, I underlined the word proactive when I shared that first slide around Tier One with you. I believe that teachers don't need to learn about a child that's in their class in September, October, November, that, oh, this child isn't being challenged that way. They don't have to experience that. Teachers can learn ahead of time through the work of ECS resource teachers, through the documentation of student learning over time, through the collaboration of teachers across grade levels and teachers with other specialists, that students can be carried year to year to year without having to learn all over again, and a parent has to advocate again in this grade and again in that grade. I think that's very important. I also think that, again, project-based learning is a place where you can really, you can see a kid light up, that you might not have known to go there, if you will.
Ms. Park?
I, too, will say thank you for this. For me, it's sort of particularly fun because I actually haven't been part of this conversation, so it's kind of all new, and so it's a little intimidating even to, you know, figure out what question to ask.
You can act out, we know how to respond.
That's right. That's right.
The, one of the words that has kept coming up in my mind over the last half hour, 45 minutes, or whatever, is integration and a kind of a musing or a fantasy that, that an end stage of what you're, you know, and I love this, I love this kind of, you know, push-me-pull-you diagram or, you know, folded-out, you know, pyramid or whatever. An end stage of it is that there is no longer enrichment and challenge as a separate concept because the teaching and learning incorporates that. And it's not that you have, it's not that every student has an IEP in either direction, but that the system is sensitive enough to identify the needs to the teacher of every student so that they can be met in a kind of a real-time basis. And you said that a big, one of the things that you kept saying was, do we have to identify the assessments in order to get there? And it struck me that in the era where we're trying to struggle against being overwhelmed by testing, that we don't want to be confusing assessments and testing, and what we really want is to have the assessments embedded in the curriculum, in the teaching and learning, so that the information is emerging about the students, or every student, through the process of engaging with the work. And is, are you doing that? Is that where you're going to be, you know, trying to identify the assessments in ways that integrate them with the, you know, with the curriculum, embed them in the curriculum? Does that make sense?
I appreciate the question because it gives me the opportunity to make it very clear that assessment doesn't mean test.
Yes.
Right? Assessment doesn't mean test. And in fact, Ms. Scotto, you said earlier, a form of data is observation, all right? So if we had a checklist or a rubric that described particular behaviors, let me say it this way, Ms. Martin led work over the past two years around the skills and work habits of effective learners. And with other coordinators and teachers, what they have done is they have described what those skills and habits look like across what those skills and habits look like across the grade levels, across all of those skills. So when you take that document and you create it as sort of a checklist or it's something that the teachers can sort of carry with them as they're, you know, seeking to observe those particular behaviors, they can keep track of that and that then becomes an assessment of, in this case, effective learner work habits and skills. All right, so if you're looking around, if one of those is inquiry, let's say, all right, how many times does a student ask a question? What types of questions are they asking? Right, are they, are they basic questions or are they more analytical questions? So I'm trying to come up with examples to show you that when I say student learning data, when I say assessment, what I'm talking about is identifying, what is it we want to see? What do we want to see as evidence of learning, evidence of, evidence of growth, whether it's around content, skills, aptitudes, whatever that may be? If I can add one other piece to this, a very important point, and I apologize for not saying this earlier, it's very important and recommendations from the committee that we work towards students owning their own learning. And so what's meant by that is not students being responsible, they have to, you know, help themselves to, it's about them knowing themselves as learners, knowing themselves in terms of what it is they like, what are they good at, what do they need to do more of, and being ones who can then advocate for themselves, who can communicate with the teacher about how a particular activity unit lesson may be going and what they might need. It's about a student who, when given a particular activity and that student finishes, let's say, that the student owning their own learning, saying, okay, I am finished, what else can I do now? Instead of this, I'm finished, I'm finished, I'm done, right? All right, metaphorically, if you will, okay, they finish, they finish. They look at it this way, right? They wonder about it that way, okay? They engage themselves in inquiry, in reflection about that work, in, you know, being curious and then again, communicate with the teacher. Point being to have students actually come to own their own learning, because what we can't do is set it up for the teacher to be the provider all the time around challenge. Challenge me, student, challenge me. In what way am I challenging? What am I bringing to this myself?
So I just want to say a couple of things. I mean, first of all, thank you, this is a tremendous body of work. It's just so exciting to see how the vision has evolved and morphed over time. And one of the things that's interesting to me over watching this conversation for the last number of years is how there are specific action items, but there are also just some really important mindsets that need to change. And I think there is a fair amount of myth busting that has to go on, if you will. So, I mean, there's any number of myths that people, or mindsets that people have. I mean, one is, this is a gifted and talented program. It's not, it's about challenging every child, it's about challenging and figuring out where, I know sometimes people freak out at this language, but figuring out where kids are and challenging them at their level. And I think there's this myth, there are a lot of myths, right? One is, well, we already know who all the smart kids are, right? We already know who they are. A good teacher knows who they are. Well, sometimes good teachers know who they are and sometimes good teachers know who certain kids are, the ones with louder parents or the ones with more privileged and advantaged parents or the ones who demonstrate a particular kind of aptitude. But I don't think we necessarily know it with equity. I think we know we don't know it with equity. We don't know, because we see on your achievement chart, we see gaps in advanced learners, we see racial gaps, we see all kinds of gaps. So I think the idea that we know who the kids are, I hope, has been successfully busted by this process, or at least it's starting to be. And, and, you know, we do need these assessments to figure out who the kids are. And assessment doesn't mean test, as you said, but it does have to be some evidence of, of learning. It could be portfolio work, it could be, you know, describing your work, describing your learning, making your learning visible. There are all kinds of ways to assess, but some evidence that the learning has advanced, which I think is just different from the perception data, right? So the parent perception that the kid has learned is different, or even the kid's perception of having fun, that's all great, but that's different from like, can the child actually do stuff that they couldn't do before? And so I do think that there's just a little bit of this myth of who they are. I think there's another myth, which is, you know, the problem is outside the classroom, right? The problem is, and, you know, certain places you hear this more than others, the problem is because kids get outside enrichment. That's the real problem. They get outside Russian math or whatever. And, you know, one of the things that I think has been, a myth that's been busted here is that, you know, that's not, that's not true. And even if it is, we still have to challenge kids where they are. Because frankly, again, not every child gets Russian math or not every child gets access to other types of enrichment. And even if they did, right, you don't say that about reading. Well, they read at home too much, so we don't know how to challenge them now, right? Like they, tell them to stop reading at home and that would solve the problem. So I just, I feel like there were just a lot of mindsets and assumptions that, that I think were, it takes a while to extract and I guess I just appreciate this committee's attempt to begin that. And I wouldn't underestimate the challenge of now bringing that out into an entire group of parents, an entire group of staff potentially. I mean, similar to, you know, the idea that the kids will be fine, right? Even if we don't do this, they're not suffering. There are kids who are really suffering and these kids aren't suffering, they'll be fine. And I think that there's just this whole idea of, you know, and Carol Dweck's mindset research talks about this, right, where we say, well, if you're not challenged, then you get really, really afraid of challenge and you get brittle and you freak out and you run away from challenge and you're not resilient and you don't develop skills where you persist. And so I think this idea that the kids will be fine isn't actually right. They get afraid to fail. And so it's a different kind of, 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 a different kind of problem, but if you don't really challenge them early and you don't know who the kids are who need different things, then it, you know, you're just perpetuating further, further problems, especially with equity. And I think parents have a lot of myths of their own, right? The idea of, well, don't, like, don't give me more homework, don't just give me more worksheets, don't just give me, like, the kids are under enough pressure as it is, don't give us more. And I think that all of your, you know, your conception of flow, the conception of how, what challenge means, what it looks like, it means engagement, it doesn't mean more worksheets, that parents have to be kind of reeducated as well, because a lot of parents that I talk to say, well, I just want the kid to be at the next level. I want, you know, my kid's already tested out. Or, you know, in reading, my kids are, it's the Harry Potter, reading Harry Potter in second grade problem, you know, my kid's already so much more advanced. Like, yeah, but your kid doesn't understand Harry Potter, right? Just because they're reading them and when they're eight. And so I do think that there's just something about balancing this idea of, you know, needing assessments, needing tangible proof that achievement has happened and not just perception has happened, but also just matching that to this change in ownership and teachers owning this and parents owning this and all of us owning the fact that there are going to be kids with lots of promise whose parents aren't engaged and we need to, as a public school system, figure that out. So I think there's just, and why it's so important to do this, because otherwise they do get brittle and they're not resilient and they don't meet their potential and they, it's a different, it's a different way of suffering. So I think there's just a lot of, a lot of work ahead, which is exciting and great and all this brings us there. But I have to say that when I look at, when I look at the budget that we're putting against this, as I've said in multiple previous meetings, I think that the amount of money that we're putting against this relative to the amount of work we have to do is very small. I think even an override budget, I would anticipate that this will maybe hold us for a year, but if we're serious about all this, if we're serious about engaging parents differently, engaging staff differently, really getting assessments different, really doing all this work, it's going to take a lot more than 1.9 FTEs and $136,000. And so I guess all I would say is, like, we just need to be ready for that if we're serious. So, I mean, in a no override budget, not only is all this going away, but in fact, the other piece that's going away that's of deep concern, it, I don't know if we talked about it tonight, but it's a deep concern, is on a no override budget, none of this is happening and we're not doing $266,000 of math specialists. So it's like a double whammy if the, if the no override situation happens. And here, at least we are supplementing it with other resources, but I just, I feel like this is amazing and I'm so excited and I feel like it's, we are going to look back on this and say, that was a great start and it was so important to get us here, but I just think the resource level going forward, if we're serious, is going to be much more. And, and not a wish list resource level. I mean, the wish, the wish list resource level is probably 10x, but even just sort of a minimum threshold level is probably significant more than this. So I know I'm repeating what I've said in earlier meetings, but I just feel like if we're going to have this discussion here in a budget context, it's important to underscore. So, but thank you, thank all of you.
I just want to be sure that as we do thank folks, we thank the committee, that Amy Martin is thanked. Again, this is one of these pieces of work that Amy just so silently, you know, manages and works through that we get to the end here of a tremendous product with your leadership, Amy, so thank you.
Great.
Nice job, thank you.
So our next agenda item is a technology plan. Oh, by the way, and we're, we're all delighted that ECS isn't just, let's just-